The flag. America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for old business, we're going to start for setting the the schedule for the annual town elections and we have received the proposed dates. And do I have a motion to approve the dates?
I move to approve the January 3rd, 2014 as the town election with the primary if needed on May 6th, 2014.
Did you say January or June?
I might have said January, so. I'm, I move that we set June 3rd, uh, two thou- June 3rd, 2014 as the, uh, date for the annual town election with the primary or preliminary election of May 6th, 2014 if needed.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
It's only six months. Um, the only question I have is, is this seems a little bit earlier than like by a week or so. Is there a reason? Okay, because I know that, you know, it's typically the second week of the month of June and I don't know if there's any reason to change it to the third. I'm just, you know, I, I, I think there's some things you always kind of follow and then since the elections have been in June, they've always been the second week. At least I, that's what I recall, so.
I wonder if it's, has, was the high school graduation changed or anything that you know?
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of the month, yeah. I mean, it doesn't bother me, I'm not up for reelection. It's your choice, are you okay with it?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. Anyone else have a problem or concern about it being that early? No? Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it's passed four and Alex isn't here. Now we'll look at the dates for the, um, annual town meeting. And the annual town meeting, it, it looks like it's looking for May 13th, 2014 proposed. I know we had spoken and I asked this to be postponed about trying to have the town meeting on a Saturday and the town manager came back to tell me there would have to be a bylaw change in order to have.
We did check with town council and under the bylaws there, uh, there's a piece of paper he sent me, but basically you have to do it, um, the, the time of day has to be after 6:00 PM and it was, um.
Monday through Friday.
Yeah, they was, or, or on, I guess something about having it be on a Tuesday and I apologize for not having it with me, but, um, it was basically a Saturday was, a Saturday morning was no go.
And so, uh, we're, these, these dates are just coming back, but when we look at maybe having the charter commission, we could maybe look at that and see what some other options or bylaw changes. Uh, is there a motion to approve the date?
I move to approve the, uh, to set the date of May 13th, 2014 at 7:00 PM for the annual town meeting at Long Island High School.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, approved four and then Alex is not here. Alright, so let's move on to, it's under new business.
I don't know if you have this, but it just announced what's, what, since we gave the election dates, what's up for election? That, that there's going to be an election for select, if you don't mind, I'll do it.
Now, that would be good because we're also looking for people to run.
We have, we have a selection for, uh, an election, excuse me, for the select board. There's one three-year term expiring, Marie's term expires this year. For school committee, there are three vacancies, uh, for a three-year term, Elizabeth Bone, John Fitzgerald and Michael Clark's terms are expiring. For the planning board, it's a five-year term that's expiring, that's Roy Johansson. And for the housing authority, it's also a five-year term and it's Edward Klein, uh, and everybody there is a, uh, an incumbent.
Thank you. Now we have the, um, draft of the policy for general reserve balance. Uh, we have moved to GFOA and to be compliant, we really need to have our financial policies clearly written and so we're reviewing them as we go along and, uh, this was given to us before and there were some suggestions of some changes to be made in the policy. It's mainly about how it was written out or described and, um, this is the change draft. Paul Pasturjik's here, if we have any questions or concerns. So why don't we start with a motion on the floor and then we can discuss it during discussion. Is there a motion to approve the draft general reserve balances? Policy?
Sure.
Okay, and discussion? Any questions or comments on the policy, I'm sorry, Paul?
Paul, we've had a policy, um.
Of excess free cash going into the operating stabilization fund. This is obviously going to replace that.
Well, it's, it would be, not necessarily replaced, in addition to, because that statement still remains in this policy, right?
Right, but, alright, but I mean, it's going to overwrite what we already have and.
Actually, these are target balances for the beginning of the fiscal year that we're trying to achieve. Um, and again, I think that free cash transfer is just becoming a, a part of it. But it's more to achieve a certain level of, of reserves at fiscal year end or fiscal year beginning, whichever way you want to look at it, June 30th or July 1st. So that we have cushions, should we have volatility in our revenues or certain expenditure levels spiking for, be it storm damage, be it, you know, anything that's a rare occurrence.
Any other question for Paul?
Well, I just actually have a, you know, a statement to the, to the board more or less is that, you know, when, it says the town has historically used some portion of free cash to subsidize the operating budget, however, uh, it is a town's goal not to use free cash. It's not a goal, we actually have a policy not to fund, um,
Recurring costs.
Recurring costs with, with one-time revenue and, um, even though we've historically may have done that for the last three or four years, um, I don't think that's something that should be, I don't know why that descriptor is in the policy other than, I know that GFOA says you have to describe something for the public consumption, so to speak, if, I don't know if that's the right words, but.
I, I would say that to be more precise, you want to change the word goal to be just the town's policy and just reiterate what the policy says?
Yeah, but then we also go down in, um, in the supplemental information. And this is the same thing I said last time, the town's free cash balance is an important indicator of the town financial condition and I disagree with that wholeheartedly. I think that, um, you know, when we've had free cash, it's always been, especially sizable amounts have been unexpected turnbacks, for example, where someone may have retired in the beginning of the year from the police or fire department and you have that whole, and they may not, not have been replaced. I remember, you know, we had a few retirements one year. But a decline in free cash doesn't necessarily mean that the town is in a bad financial position, it could mean that we actually have but, better tighter budgeting controls so that we don't end up with those excesses and, um, I, I don't, I, I, and I said, I, I said this when we talked about this the last time, I don't, I don't think this is very accurate in terms of what our policy is, is that other than anything above $500,000 was going into operating stabilization fund. The rest of this I don't necessarily agree with. I think that, um, free cash is, this is, this is about our general reserve balances and this seems like it's a free cash policy and description as opposed to reserve balances. And, and I, when, when I'm looking at the reserve balances, I'm thinking about the reserve fund and, um, the operating stabilization fund and so forth, I don't, I just don't like the descriptor that says free cash is a, it's an indicator of our town's health.
Well, it's two, two things, um, when the financial statements are done, um, you know, the, the, the definition here of general reserve balance is free cash and stabilization fund. When the town's financial, um, statements are written in generally accepted accounting principles conformity, the, actually the stabilization fund balance and free cash are melded together into one fund, into general fund. So that's kind of the reason why, first of all, to define the general fund balance or the general reserve balance is the combination of those two. The second part, where you say a decline in free cash, it's written as a declining balance, so it's more of a trend that we're looking at. Where if we're continually going down in our free cash balance, the trend is an indicator that we're having some difficulty with, with our, our budgeting per se. If, you know, if we had a million, if we had $5 million in free cash and went down to 4 million to 3 million, I mean, that really, we're still in a strong free cash position. But if our free cash was, was very low and still dwindling, I think that's more of the indicator that it's trying to express that when it's low and declining, that's where we're in financial trouble, that we, we're not generating the reserves that we need and the policy addresses the reserves that we need to get up to if we do have a declining free cash balance or stabilization fund balance.
I, I think we're disagreeing on free cash and stabilization in terms of, you're caught, you're classifying everything as free cash and I'm segregating it by stabilization fund, which is our savings account. Free cash is the money you left, you have left over in your pocket at the end of a week. Um, where stabilization fund is your emergency money in the bank and, but you're, you're, you're kind of lumping it all together at that point.
I am lumping it together.
Yeah, my understanding is the same as Paul Santinello's, that, that, you know, if we were to have a, a budget where we spent what we budgeted, our free cash would not change and if during that year, say, there was an unbudgeted item, we'd take, take it out of free cash, our free cash would go down. And that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a, uh, an indication of, and I think it would say, and, and of declining, uh, a declining revenue or problems in collecting revenue, it just means we did a really good job of budgeting and something unbudgeted came up. And I'd, I'd prefer to use the term, you know, if, if we want to express what you're expressing, Paul, I, I'd like to say general reserves are, you know, are, are, uh, in, in, town's general reserve balance or reserve fund balance, that clearly is the case.
I don't have a problem with that. I, I think it's, it's trying to get at what we're truly trying to say, it's just clarified.
I think if our reserve fund balance starts declining, then we've got some issues, but, you know, but I don't think it's necessarily that.
I, I, again, I would be happy with changing, replacing the word free cash that's in the first sentence of supplemental information with general reserve balance, so the town's general reserve balance is, is an important indicator. Is that the sentence that you're referring to?
Yes.
Yep, I, I have no issue with that.
So, uh, is there a, a amendment to the motion to change the word town's goal to town's policy? And, uh, town's free cash to town's general reserve?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure it's the town's policy, I think it's the select board's policy, now that, those are synonymous. That's fine, but, you know, my, I, I typically, I think that, that there's actually a select board policy that we move free cash in excess of $500,000 transferred to the operating fund.
I, I think they are synonymous because we do small things, we say it's the town's general reserve balance, we're not saying it's the select board's general reserve balance, I think they're synonymous.
So you don't want to change the word goal, but did you want to have an amendment to the reserve, uh, general reserve instead of free cash?
Just a couple, it says in a lot of places, Marie, so if, if we're looking at the paragraph heading that says supplemental information, the paragraph just above that that says free cash.
Yes.
I mean, in my opinion, I'm not sure why we have that, that entire paragraph, although it's, it, I guess that's the policy, free cash in excess of $500,000. But, uh, then, then, and that's, that's fine, free cash in excess of $500,000 will be transferred to the operating stabilization fund. And that's an existing policy anyway, so there, there's nothing wrong with that paragraph. Paragraph below that where it says supplemental information, I think we want to say the town's general reserve balance is an important indicator of the town financial condition.
So you do want to amend the motion to change town's free cash to town's general reserve in that line?
It's also two lines down.
It's also two lines down.
Okay, so, and then where it says free cash again, it would be general reserve there also?
No, the free cash is generation of the operation of the previous year, the free cash in that particular case would stay as is.
Okay, so.
It's the first and third lines of supplemental information that I see, right? What about you?
So the sentence that begins, "Free cash provides a financial cushion against sudden loss of revenue," that's really general reserves, it should say.
Right.
Okay, so those are the two places, so the, we would be looking for an amendment that would say, under supplemental, on line one and line three, free cash is replaced by a general reserve.
Yeah, who made the motion?
Who's going to put in that amendment?
Richard made the motion.
Yeah. Richard, are you comfortable with that amendment?
Sure.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. So the amendment, I want to make sure we get this correct, the amendment, okay, so Jackie, the amendment is under supplemental information. Instead of town's free cash, it's town's general reserve. And on line three, instead of free cash provides a financial cushion, it's general reserve provides a financial cushion. Uh, that amendment was moved by Richard Foster and was seconded by Paul Santinello. Any discussion? All those in favor?
The amendment.
Of the amendment?
Yep.
Okay, so that passed three. And, um, any further discussion on the draft policy? All those in favor of the policy? Is three. And so, thank you very much for all that work and the finance committee.
Yeah, I guess, I voted for.
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry, four, there's four of us, thank you, Paul, four.
Thank you. Oppose that one.
And now you know why there's. Okay, so there was nothing else on the agenda, we're moving right to the, um, town managers', um, evaluation of Department of Public Works. And how this has come about is I think this is something we've been discussing on the board for many, many years. Uh, we, ever since the, I've been hearing about it for three years and ever since the, um, the Department of Public Works was combined from maintenance and all the various departments after the changing of the charter, the maintenance out of parks and wrecks came under Department of Public Works. So there was a lot of changes under the charter and the, the consolidation occurred and we've always wondered how well the consolidation occurred, did we give enough resources to it and how it, it is functioning now. Um, we've asked the town manager to look at that and, uh, see how we are going forward. I think this is a very big project, as I said, we've been talking about this for years and we're finally starting it and so this is sort of a work in progress. And we'd be very interested to hear what you found out so far, uh, Mr. Crane. I will move off to the side and let you start your show. Yeah, I'll just go over here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the board. The request was made, um, so this is my, um, it says town manager's report on DPW, I want to clarify this, it was discussion about issuing a report, um, a report is a standalone document. Um, this is a presentation that I, I have some narrative that goes along with it. So this is, you know, um, I just prepare, I, I just finished it recently as I fully formulated my thoughts on what I wanted to present this evening, so, um, the request was to give my impressions about the Department of Public Works. And the following presentation is intended to give a, to give background information about the department and an assessment of operations, not a personnel evaluation. I would ask that the board holds questions and comments until the presentation is finished, it's about 30 slides and I will go as quickly as I can. So, um, the public works, uh, department statement, uh, this is, and I should say, some of this information is, um, you'll be seeing, uh, in the fiscal year 2015 budget proposal, this is, a lot of this is reflective of the new standards for GFOA budgeting. And the Department, the Department of Public Works consists of multiple divisions collectively responsible for maintaining and improving the town's public spaces and infrastructure. Next slide. Uh, there's a lot of words on here, but this just describes the five divisions, the engineering division, the highway division, the grounds division, the building maintenance division and the water and sewer division and, and goes generally into, um, some of their responsibilities. Uh, in addition to the five divisions, I wanted to highlight that the, that the Department of Public Works also interfaces with several boards and commissions, uh, in the town, including the, the select board, who are also the water and sewer commission, parks and recreation committee, recycling committee, tree committee, conservation committee and the community preservation committee. What you have here before you, which is kind of hard to read, is the organizational chart, um, for the Department of Public Works. And the only thing I would note is that at the top you have, you know, the select board, water sewer commission, the town manager and, you know, the direct line through to the department, uh, to the director of public works, who's also the tree warden. But, as you can see with the dashed lines and other things, there are a lot, there are a lot of entities that are, um, may not have direct authority, but have a lot of say into what happens at the Department of Public Works or what should happen at the Department of Public Works. There really is, you know, many org charts are cleaner when the top is, has fewer parties and the responsibility spreads out the further you get down, that is obviously a lot of top-heavy, um, input on the department. Next slide. So these are the five divisions and, um, this just gives you a quick snapshot of what they do, the engineering department in the administration, um, basically have oversight of the other divisions, they prepare, uh, annual budget and capital plans. Uh, they deal with a lot of the permitting and infrastructure and they manage the infrastructure projects. They ensure compliance with, uh, regulations, they oversee safety and, uh, the environmental management systems as well as, uh, the equipment replacement program. Collectively, the highway, sanitation, recycling and grounds divisions, uh, maintain, uh, 92 miles of roads, including sidewalks and drainage systems. There's also 138 acres of parks and grounds. Uh, they continue to advance the infrastructure improvements and maintenance and, um, they maintain the street and traffic advisory signs. Building maintenance division, there are six school, school buildings and seven town buildings that keep them very busy. They also oversee capital improvement projects for those, for public, uh, buildings and other facilities. And they also, uh, play a central role in monitoring and reducing, uh, energy, energy expenses and consumption as well as oversee the custodial services. And then the water and sewer division, uh, maintains is about 90 miles of water and sewer mains each. There is a pump station for the water, two pump stations for the sewer, they also do the utility billing, you know, and actively maintain the water and sewer infrastructure, including our water tower. And they are transitioning to a unidirectional flushing program. You can see the staffing level here, this is the full-time equivalents, there's about 38 in total. Um, if, I know the board knows this, but for those who may be watching at home, if you wonder how you can have, uh, 11.46 full-time equivalent employees, it's because this is an allocation of time and because the, the water and sewer utilities are enterprise funds, if a highway crew goes out to excavate for a water main replacement, that time is charged to the enterprise fund. And so there's a somewhat complicated formula, but generally speaking, it's 38 full-time equivalent employees. So the next part of this presentation is, um, about operations specifically about contracted services, that's something we talk about. I have it divided into two categories, outsourcing and insourcing. Uh, I don't, it'll take forever if I go through all these slides, but I just wanted for your future consumption to lay out, um, what functions are currently outsourced and to show you, um, some level of comparison where available, uh, where savings are achieved or where the DPW does not possess the specific ability or equipment or certifications to perform certain tasks and, um, to give you a sense of how that evaluation is made in terms of what to contract out and what to do in-house. And so the outsourcing part shows you the functions that the evaluation has been made to contract out based on factors we've tried to briefly capture. And then the future slides on, on insourcing will have the reverse on why they, um, are done in-house versus contracted out. I guess what I would say, if you can go back, Paul, just one, um, I want to see if I can highlight one here, um. So on the grounds, um, I want to say mulching is a good example. Uh, there are those who do a, a mulch blower that is a, uh, significant cost savings in terms of man-hours and how a contractor can come in and do all the work for the mulching for the town in three days versus between mowing and trash collection and all of our other duties, it would take several weeks to be able to have our limited, um, grounds, because you can see there was only five full-time equivalent employees, uh, to be able to do all that work, so that's one where it is a cost savings as well as a time savings. Next slide. Oh, back one. So here's the, those for the water and sewer and engineering, um, you know, again, there are certain things that the DPW is just not equipped to do. Replacing mains is something that usually requires a, an excavator, uh, we do not own an excavator. Um, so that's one of the reasons why we, we outsource a lot of that. Um, you know, video inspections of sewer lines, that's a specialized service that contractors do just about everywhere that I'm aware of. Next slide, Paul. So, I, so on outsourcing, there are a lot of functions and it's, and it's a pretty substantial portion of the department's budget that gets, um, committed to, uh, private vendors for, again, a variety of, of reasons that are reviewed routinely. On, uh, what I'm calling insourcing, uh, stump grind is, is an example of one that we were able to save significant money by purchasing a piece of equipment and using our own labor, um, largely because the, our tree contractor bills us by the size of the stump and it does not include loman seed. If you go to the next slide, Paul? Um, there is, like, main flushing is something that we do in-house, that we save significant amount of money on. Um, we do have the, the, the jetter truck that helps us do that. Next slide. And one I want to highlight is, uh, in the, in the maintenance, we, um, used in-house personnel to, we are using in-house personnel to do a planned renovation of the human resources and accounting office. We had bid it out and it was $3,000 more to do the private, to use a private contractor, but the contractor would have gone, would have done it somewhat more quickly, uh, about a week versus 13 days. Um, the evaluation was made that the, uh, the, the cost savings was a better value and we were willing to be flexible on the schedule, but that's, that's how most of these things break down, three ways. Uh, the ability to do it, um, in terms of what you can outsource and what you can in-source. The ability to have the service on demand when you need it, especially in an emergency. Um, something like snow plowing that we're experiencing tonight, we do, we would not want to be at the mercy of a contractor, um, showing up if we needed emergency services. The time that it takes to provide the service in the case of the mulching and the overall cost and, um, you know, equipment that may be needed. and the overall cost and, um, you know, equipment that may be needed. So, again, I, I just want to highlight that these, that there are a lot of functions that, you know, the, this, in terms of how the department operates, it operates largely, one of the key things of its operations are doing these analyses and, and making these choices on an annual basis, and, and I think the information here shows that most of the evaluations are, are achieving the goal of being either more efficient, uh, more cost-effective or more timely. Next slide. So, this, this section deals with, uh, organizational performance. When, um, through my interview and when I started the job, I, I perceived that there were really top five overall areas of concern, and, and this is not meant to be an exclusive list of concerns. Uh, I know we, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about the department. I have spent more time, um, working with and on the DPW than any other, uh, agency within the town organization. Uh, they, to some extent, they have the broadest scope of work of all the agencies, of all the departments. And, um, I will say that they generate, um, the most feedback. They generate the most, um, complaints, but they also generate by a pretty healthy margin the most compliments of any of our departments. And I, I think that's something that's worth noting, and to some extent, I think what I've described is probably many other departments of public works, um, in many municipalities. So the five areas that, that were, I think, areas of focus were project management issues, which are highlighted by the Maple Road project, the management of town asset, assets, um, which we, and some of this was highlighted well by Richard in his presentation. Um, infrequent inspections, um, the work plan certainly gave off the appearance of being reactive instead of proactive. Uh, facility needs, and that refers specifically to the DPW facility, uh, down on Pondside Road, and the need to have that facility be upgraded. Uh, resource allocation, and that is, you know, the organizational structure and, and how resources are assigned currently. And then, excuse me, the fleet composition and use, and that's the size and number of vehicles and equipment, and also enforcing proper use of those vehicles. So, I wanted to just highlight briefly, excuse me, some of the steps we've taken, um, since I arrived to address, uh, these, these issues, and, I don't want to say that we have solved everything because we certainly haven't, but I do feel like we have made meaningful progress, and I just want to highlight some of that. So, project management, uh, you know, I think the, the, the biggest example of some of the gains we've made, um, are on the Merriweather-Woodside Williams drainage improvements. And one of the things that we, that we did differently is we had weekly project meetings with the DPW managers, and that's, you know, the representative, the, the highway division, the water and sewer division, the engineering division, and the director, and I would meet. And we would, um, review the progress of the work. We'd identify issues that have come up, field conditions, impacts on neighbors. Certainly when we had those issues with the gas mains, we spent a lot of time talking about that and making sure we were in communication with the gas company and the neighbors. And through those discussions, we made project decisions about, you know, yes, we have a contract and a scope of work, but within that scope of work, there are sometimes decisions that need to be made based on how things are unfolding in the field. And rather than have, say, one division head make a decision without, you know, talking to the other, we, we made sure that the people who were, uh, most involved in the project were in the room and discussing it, and that we, I think we got a good communication process and a good decision-making process out of these meetings. Um, we use the, we did not use it all that much, but we did use the Blackboard Connect system to communicate, communicate important notices about the project. And one of the things we, we did was specialize the outreach through Blackboard Connect by using the mapping component where we just created a map area of the people who would be most affected by it versus having it go town-wide because we did not want to use, overuse the system and have people in town who don't really, or who aren't really impacted by the project, uh, be getting notices unnecessarily. The other thing that I did is, uh, I, I visited the site quite a bit. I'll be candid and say I, I enjoy getting out in the field. Um, I do like project management is something I have in my past experience. I like watching the equipment work and the trucks roll, and you see the pictures there of, of the, uh, work in the trench and seeing how complex, uh, the work was and, um, you know, the work that was done, the outfall and the, which is the picture below and the improvements made there, and just watching things evolve over time is something I personally enjoy, but it also, I think, sent the message to the contractor that all eyes were on the project and that expectations were very high and, um, that, you know, as town manager, I was, you know, watching directly. And I, again, I think that helped improve communication and decision-making in, in the project. I think that same approach helped, um, with the, um, water main replacement further south on Long Meadow Street. Um, is Barrington, not Barrington Road. Is it Barrington Road? Um, and then, you know, the decision on the winter shutdown, we decided to, uh, end the project before it crossed Long Meadow Street to avoid the risk of some kind of, um, unfortunate circumstance or some kind of snafu happening in the field. Uh, and that work will begin in the early spring along with, um, you know, the work on Laurel Street, which is the same contractor. So, uh, you know, I, I think no project is going to go a hundred percent smoothly, but I thought when, when issues came, we avoided some issues through our decision-making process. When issues did come up, I thought the, the things we had pu- put in place in the pro- the new processes we established helped us, uh, minimize the impact of those issues. And I had this slide in here, um, and I want to thank, um, uh, Mark had contacted me suggesting that, you know, we, we tell the full story here, and I just want folks to know, the reason why we, you know, when dirt is piled up and you're stuck in traffic, um, because of a, you know, there's a, a police detail there holding you while loaders are moving and dump trucks are there, it, it can be kind of frustrating. Certainly, the situation with the gas mains was very frustrating for the, for the residents. But these projects, wherever they're done, they improve the lives of town residents. And that really is, is what the goal is and what the ultimate results of the projects are. And I just wanted to show the feedback that we received from some of the neighbors who really, the people who are most affected by the project were those on Merriweather and in that neighborhood, but the people who most benefited were those upstream, if you will, um, off of Woodside. Uh, you know, um, Michael Shear wrote, "The water sewer problem appears to have been solved thanks to the work you did. There's, there has been no backup of the sewer during the la- during the heaviest rainfalls. Um, we are appreciative to the town of Long Meadow for the work that was performed to deliver the flood to de- um, alleviate, sorry, the flooding problem that we have experienced at our home at fifty-four Brookwood Drive. The flooding problems began in two thousand five with our garage and basement being flooded four times, the last two times during summer two thousand twelve. Since the additional storm drain line was added in two thousand thirteen, we have not encountered any flooding issues." And there's, uh, another one to say that concludes, needless to say, we are very pleased that this project finally came to be. I know there are another, a, a number of other problem areas around town, and hopefully the select board sees this project as a positive thing for the town and continues to fund future infrastructure projects. Thank you again for all you've done. So I just want to show that these things are, do have their intended effect. They move the water and they, uh, you know, make, improve their lives, but also their property values. So, on the issue of asset management, uh, one of the things I, I had reported on at a previous meeting is the implementation of the Cartograph Work Management System. I know there had been some discussion about why do we select Cartograph? When, any kind of software program that we add to our suite of programs that we use is evaluated. The preference, uh, by the IT department, which I support, is ease of integration with existing systems and, um, time and cost effectiveness. We already had a Cartograph pavement management system that had been invested in heavily by, uh, in both time and also resources through work with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Um, you know, we also have Munis as our finance software. And we also have I-Works, and through the evaluation of those three systems, Cartograph came out to be the best option for us based on those criteria. And as I, as I presented before, and you'll see in a moment, uh, I think it'll be excellent for helping us manage work. It'll give the, uh, community a way to, um, the citizens request form you can see there. You know, I think Richard highlighted the fact that there are a lot of things out there that people don't notice, and including uh, employees of our Department of Public Works, and that's something we do need to work on. Um, that is a, uh, an, an issue that they have acknowledged, they need to improve on. But I think once things are pointed out to them, they are very good at, at including the correction of it in their work. And so, if we have the opportunity for residents to notice things and an easy platform for them to submit requests for repairs, a cleanup, a new sign, something like that, it'll make the workflow a lot more smooth and, and improve the, uh, level of standards, uh, that we, we want to see improved. The wor- you can go to the next slide for me, Paul? One of the things that the Cartograph system will do was, it will do, um, will be to evaluate, um, each task on a resource and timeline basis for completion. And we'll be able to evaluate what takes the longest, what is the most expensive, you know, what are we really good at? Um, this level of evaluation, in addition to our stat net program that we're going to be engaged in with the Collin Center, I think will establish a framework for, uh, a solid asset and work management system for the department going forward. Okay, next slide. And to get at, to get at the issues of, um, you know, things not being done that should be done simply because they weren't noticed, one of the strengths of the Cartograph system is the work scheduling, and if you build, as you can see here, this is a sample, but as you can see, they built into their work schedule investigations, inspections, cleanings, routine things. And if you develop a comprehensive work program that is recurring, then you don't need to think about, you know, like, say for example, you want to inspect the traffic signals, the crosswalks every other month. No one has to remember that second month that it needs to be done. It just gets built into the work program. We do have work management programs now, but they are not ad- advanced to this level, and this will be a, a great upgrade for how we do things. So, next slide. So, the, the discussion about the facility upgrade was something that has been talked about a lot. Um, one of the things that, some of the actions I've taken is I've reviewed this, the siting study by the task force. Uh, we have talked to that, about that a little bit here. Uh, we did coordinate an open house of the facility to show the needs to the community and the condition of the facility and why it needs to be upgraded. One of the things we heard was, if it was such a need, why haven't we requested funds for improvements? And so, we took that, uh, admonition to heart and have requested a million dollars in our fiscal year two thousand fifteen capital plan for short ter- short-term improvements. To some extent, this request is, um, late evolving, so in, in terms of specific plans and cost estimates of, of what we'll get done with that money, we don't have that in hand as of yet. You know, you need to spend some money on design to really accurately figure those, to figure that information out. But the priorities are a new salt shed, uh, new gas pumps, new, and, uh, i- improvements to the maintenance bays so the larger trucks can be worked on indoors. Right now, if one of the larger plow trucks breaks down, the mechanics have to go outside and, you know, if they need to get underneath it, they have to, um, basically lay in the snow and try and fix it, and we want something that, um, obviously is much better for them to do, um, good mechanical work. Um, but a, a commitment from the board is needed to really move forward on this. Next slide. Of course, one of the big barriers to, um, making meaningful changes is the floodplain that exists on Pondside Road. As you can see, this gray shaded area, which is really the best part of the site, uh, most of it is in either the one-hundred or five-hundred-year floodplain, including the salt shed and gas pumps and a substantial portion of the maintenance bays. The parts of the site that aren't in the floodplain, um, you can see to the right side of the slide there, including a recycling area. Um, the historic uses of the site would probably raise some questions about the conditions of the soil for building, you know, large, large buildings on there to house the department. So that's one of the issues that we, we cannot escape, and it would, you know, there's an extra level of investments that is needed. But again, that's something that the select board commits to, um, addressing this issue. You know, it will just be a question of cost. Uh, just for an example, though, in terms of going back to the priorities, the salt shed is in, is in tough condition. It's hard to, if you have multiple storms in a row, it's hard to, to load it effectively. It's being held up by telephone poles. This is just an example of something that could be done in, you know, now, and it would be an investment that even if the DPW facility moved to a different site, it's a kit, so it could be put up and then taken down and moved to a new site. There's no foundation. It's just concrete block sidewalls. So this is an example of something that could be done as a short-term solution to, uh, the, the issues that we're facing now. So, the, the, on the issue of resource allocation, um, and this is something that came up when we discussed, uh, the consolidation that occurred under the, under the charter change. And I could find no evidence that an organizational analysis had been performed when these three other divisions, uh, parks, ground, or pa- or two other divisions, really, parks and buildings were lumped in with the rest of the department. And did, did we have the equipment, manpower, and budgetary resources aligned properly? And I know that, um, the director has been working on that issue, but we were hoping to find, you know, based on regional and national best practices, how, you know, what's the ideal allocation of resources? And so we drafted an RFP to hire consultant based on a similar study that was done in Andover that Richard had brought to our attention. And the goal was to evaluate current staffing and funding levels and compare levels to best practices. We, um, proposed an article, uh, to, for town meeting to fund the study from two thousand thirteen, FY thirteen free cash, or is it FY fourteen? Sorry, FY fourteen free cash. The town meeting did not support the article despite the select board endorsement. Um, if we're gonna ha- if, if we need to perform that, the analysis is needed. Um, there's no question about it. Doing it in-house will, um, it'll take a lot longer to do it in-house because I don't think there's anyone working for the town right now that presen- that possesses that specific knowledge of industry best practices. Uh, fleet management, um, in two thousand twelve, there was a comprehensive fleet allocation report done. And so we want to make sure that if you're going to, to come up with a plan, you stick with it. And we just want to continue to work to ensure that the fleet, vehicle and equipment purchases comply with that report. Um, I, I had heard some concerns expressed about the report. And one of the things that we were hoping to accomplish with our resource allocation study was to have a peer review of that, fleet allocation report. Unfortunately, as we just mentioned, that we did not receive the funds to do the, um, cons- necessary consulting work. We'll have, so again, we'll have, that's something we'll have to figure out either to budget for in fiscal year two thousand fifteen or to try and figure out how to do in-house. Uh, another thing we're doing is to, uh, we are installing GPS units in the DPW vehicles um, to make sure that our vehicle use policies are being adhered to. And to also, um, based on the presentations I've seen for both the GPS units and the work management system, the two of them combined will, I think, definitely yield greater efficiency in, in terms of deploying resources, uh, managing work, uh, and, and, um, just overall, you know, efficiency of the department. There's no, there's no provision for discipline under our collective bargaining agreements, but we certainly can track, um, the use of vehicles and determine, you know, are, is the department, are they where they're supposed to be? Um, or are they not? And I think, uh, the collection of that data will help also, um, be a valuable management tool. Now, these other actions are a few other things that we've done that don't necessarily fit into one of those five top concerns. Bless you. Um, one is, um, working with union leadership to develop support for plan changes. I think buy-in at, at the, uh, ground level is important if we're really going to, um, strive for improvement. Uh, I did address the entire department. I did address the entire department and listen to them about their, I listened to their views about how things were going and their concerns and got some good advice from them and also set forth what I, what my vision of the organization is and what I think that the boards and the towns' expectations of them are. From what I'm told, the first town manager to ever do that. We have also established a safety committee within the department that is both managers and union personnel, which is also a first for the department. And it's that collaboration that will help improve work safety for the whole department and redress some of the issues that have been lingering with regards to safety. One of the things we've heard about is there is an afternoon break that the employees are entitled to and we understand that sometimes it can disrupt the flow of the work. And so, we've, we're working with the union to try and find a way to eliminate the afternoon break. And then the other action we're doing is continuing, even though we're not in the middle of a project, we want to, we're going to continue our weekly meetings just to go over general operational issues and to keep that feedback loop open. This is something I just learned about, oh, at 5:30? And I thought it was important to put in here because we've talked about the sewer jet truck and how often that is used and why that is used and I think it's emblematic of what could be perceived as a problem with the DPW. But, the truck, amongst other efforts, is a central factor in our sewer main maintenance program. And we have been nominated for an award by Maya, which is our insurance company that is an arm of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, for a Excellence in Loss Control Award. And this is an email from our Maya representative, Bob Marinelli, and I just, if you'll permit me to read it, say, "Just want to drop you a quick note to let you know that I have nominated the Town of Long Meadow for Maya's 2013 Excellence in Loss Control Award. The nomination was made mostly, mainly due to the efforts in, over recent years to control loss exposures in the area of sewer operations. The town's commitment in this area is paying off as sewer backup claims have declined in both frequency and severity, resulting in significant improvement in the overall loss experience for the town. With this nomination, I recognize the Safety Committee members and efforts for keeping the ball rolling in all areas of risk management for the town." And this is what he submitted on behalf of the town to Maya. "The Town of Long Meadow has an active safety committee that has met consistently for nearly a decade. The town suffered from poor loss experience for many years in the area of sewer backup claims. For the past few years, town officials made commitment to address this issue by allocating resources for proactive measures. Since the inception of this program, the town's loss experience has reduced dramatically and sewer backup claims have significantly dropped off. The town's consistent, the town consistently participates in the Maya Rewards Program and is among the leading Western Mass members in dollars earned in rewards." And I, again, I think a lot of the stuff that is done that is positive sometimes doesn't get recognized, certainly the stuff that is done that is not positive, you know, does get recognized, so I want to just show the other side of the coin. Also, I mean, this success is the town's success, including the Select Boards. Paul Pasterzic is a big part of this, so I mean, this is not just the DPW. I mean, the sewer division is certainly leading the way, but this is a town-wide victory just being nominated. And it's something we should all be proud of. Next slide? So, I just threw these in here and these are just five items that have happened just since I've been here in April that are significant events that the DPW really stepped up on that are beyond all of the other work that I've outlined, that they perform on a day-in, day-out basis. They provided, as the high school project has been drawing to a close, there has been some work that has been, some change order work by virtue of some things that have happened, you know, part of the project is a rehab of, of one of the original buildings, they call it Building A for the project. Any money spent on the renovation of the building is 100% town funds, not reimbursable through the MSBA. And there have been times where work has been needed and rather than pay through the general contract with contractor markups, we've been able to perform the work at a significant savings internally. And it's ranged from things outside to electrical work and the Director who serves, who has served on the committee, I believe since its inception, has always answered the call when the, when the high school project has needed it. When they dedicated the building, there was a tremendous amount of behind-the-scenes work that went into the dedication ceremony, which I think by all accounts was a wonderful event. The, excuse me, Wounded Warriors 5K Race, which was one of the biggest road races in Western Mass and the biggest Veterans Day event that the town has done in anyone's memory, would not have come off the way it did without the help of the Department of Public Works. Especially, I want to single out Chris Reed for his role in that as well. Excuse me. As everyone knows, we've been spending a significant amount of time over the past few months preparing for the Springfield development, the Springfield Casino Development and what that means for us as a surrounding community. The Department of Public Works, especially the town engineer, have played a vital role in helping analyze those impacts and develop, and help make recommended mitigation strategies for the board's consideration. And then, and we've talked about this before, we are in, we are very close to signing a new three-year solid waste disposal contract. That's not the people who come get it from your driveway, it's the place where those trucks take it. That will be a substantial cost savings for the town compared to what we're paying now and the Director of the department was instrumental in helping with those negotiations. So these are just, these are not annual tasks that they do. These are three, these are five things that have kind of, that are just, like I said, and this is just since I've been here, so I want to commend them for that extra work. Excuse me. So, next steps. So, developing strategies for analyzing resources and structure, this is something we can, the Collins Center may have some resources for this and we will certainly mine for those, for those, for any information or any assistance they can provide through our StatNet project. Focusing on rollout of planned actions, the work management system and the GPS, as everybody knows, software is garbage in, garbage out. And so, we want to build in ways to evaluate the effectiveness and to make sure that this new technology, we get the most out of it and we feed it the information and data it needs to be successful, which will in turn lead us to be successful. We want to develop performance standards. There's a maintenance management system model that Richard has shared with me that I think is an excellent platform to work off of. You know, and I was, step one in that is, is get staff involved and I think we're, we've done a good job getting the staff involved and taking that first step. And then, continue to review the outsourcing, insourcing work and as a part of that, and this came up, I think there's an issue with, there's a couple of issues out there that we are working on. I think the most public one was the trash collection. Make sure that we are doing a good job managing our contracts and, you know, if there's a contract issue, that we are doing everything we can to follow up to protect the town's interest and get the work we are supposed to be getting for the price we're supposed to be paying. And then finally, and I shouldn't say finally, there are many things that we, that need to be done and there's a lot of work ahead of us, so this list, again, is not exhaustive. We want to refine our personnel management practices and we want to, and again, continue the dialogue with the union and find ways that we can work together to make the department the best it can be. And I just want to point out, the graphic I had put in there to illustrate the point that we really want to continue to climb that hill towards improvement, but there's not an end goal. And then I, at the last minute, put that quote in, which is one of my favorites, from Vince Lombardi. It says, "Perfection is not attainable, but if we chase perfection, we can catch excellence." And I wanted to highlight that because the Department of Public Works will never be perfect. There's never going to be a moment where we sit here and say, "Yep, there's, they've done it all, there's nothing out there that needs to be done and every single employee that works there has been perfect all year." I don't think anyone can say that about any of us. And so, I want, I know the departments, both from top to bottom, the departments cares about their work, they want to do a good job and with the right leadership, they can, they are committed to pursuing perfection in the hopes of achieving excellence. Questions or comments?
Well, thank you very much. That was a very thorough presentation. And I know that was a lot of work that went into that and I appreciate the work that did go into that. But I think, as we said before, this is a work in progress and I think it makes sense for us to revisit this at least every other month and see how we are going with putting in these processes. Like I know, StatNet and the asset management, so we'll probably ask for a follow-up in another two months. Unless something comes up you want to talk about. So why don't we open this up to questions or comments? Mark?
Stephen, thank you first of all. I just want to go back to, not that it matters, the slide's on page nine. It says the top five areas of concern. You list those top five areas of concern, I think you, as far as I'm concerned, those five are as good as any five I'd come up with, so, you know, I'm not questioning the areas. I guess I'm, I'm looking at, is there a specific written plan that you have or can put together for each of those areas so that you, Mike Grable is the department director and us, can measure progress on those in the upcoming six months and one year? You know, I'm, I'm not going to argue whether those are the best five to do, but, but I think that we need to have milestones or, or, or something that can contain, I guess my question is, is that something you can put together for us, you know, with Mike's agreement, with the department's agreement, so they and we know how we're doing against achieving progress?
I think a plan could be put together. I'm trying to visualize how that would look for some of the, how we would quantify some of the things. And this is something that, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not a management analyst and so, coming up with the scientific model of planning has never been something that is my strong suit. Perhaps that's something we can talk to the Collins Center about and see if they can help us create something. I mean-
I mean, I have some great ideas, but I don't want to set, set the goals. I mean, for example, on project management, it ought to be, you know, how many projects are achieved at, on time or at budget or better than time and number of complaints, you know, whatever it is, you put, if you don't quantify it, it's always going to be, "Well, we think we did okay," as opposed to, you know, "We didn't have any complaints and we were on time and there were no, you know, shut, unplanned shutdowns of roads" or, or, or whatever it is. And even on, you know, you know, town, management of town assets, we can talk about some of the things we're going to do. All I'm saying is, I think that, you know, it would be very helpful for us as we track continual progress here to get quantifiable goals in, as I said, I mean, you know, whether you pick these five or you decide to pick five others or whatever it is, but I think these are as good as any.
Again, Mark, I would say that in terms of quantifying achievements for work, our Cartograph System is designed to do that. And again, the StatNet performance measurement, and I hate to keep throwing these things out there, and we've been delayed on both of them and so it keeps, I, it, even as I'm saying, I know it sounds like some kind of far-off thing that, you know, is like a future promise, but we are going to get engaged in doing that. As I sit here now, since we are already making the conversion to the Cartograph Work Management System and we are and going to soon be engaged in this performance measurement project through StatNet, I'd like to have the opportunity to see how those play out and if I need to create an additional, and if, if that doesn't work for us, we need to create something else, then we should do that, I agree with you. But I'd like to give the, the two things we're going to be engaged in a chance to work.
Yeah, but-
Because they're supposed to do what you're asking for.
Can you add, just as a follow-up? So in other words, without these two programs, we have no idea of how good or bad we've done on a particular project. That's what you're asking, right? About, it's kind of like a measurement system, Mark, right?
Well, no, I, I don't know what these programs do, Paul. I mean, I-
No, but you just asked.
My, my question was-
How do you quantify it?
And it's not on a project, it's on, you know, how do we know we're making progress on better project management? And I'm not sure that implementing cartographic project management means we're making good progress unless we know what's cartographic project management supposed to do for us and then did it do that? And so, maybe the issue is, we're going to implement that because they promised that it will do this, this, and this. And then we'll go find out, okay, by next year this time, did we do this, this, and this? And it may be a measure of success of cartographic or how we utilize it. I'm sure the software, you know, is garbage in, garbage out too, or good, good out.
Well, I think, there's ways to evaluate success and some of them are not as easily quantifiable or fit into a performance, you know, data-driven metric. And that's where I'm interested to see how the StatNet program does that for municipalities. I mean, that's what they do for municipalities. And I've never been a part of something like that, so that's where I said I want to get the chance to see how that works because it's not a strength of mine, to be honest with you. I'm, I manage largely, you know, it's policies, relationships, and feel are my three strengths in managing and, you know, how do you know you've succeeded? Well, Merryweather Road and Barrington Road went more smoothly than Maple Road. And, you know, I think, so I, and I know that's not, doesn't quantify anything. And so, I, I hear what you're saying, Mark, about the quantification of it and like I said, I think we're supposed to do that. It's just not, like I said, it's not a particular strength of mine to be able to quantify that.
Why don't we give it to March 1st, give you some time to look at it, see where these programs are and see if you can come back to us with some milestones because, as I said, we need to revisit this and I think we've been struggling with how to figure out measurement of success and milestones. This is sort of a conversation we've been having for a while in order to really get a good feeling of how we're progressing.
But a question, I guess, I think that needs to be answered. Before, before, you know, you could, anybody can use a computer program for, for anything and say, "Well, this is going to help us do whatever." I have programs that I use to help people and so forth. So my question would be is, what are we doing now to measure success? And to say, for example, your example, that Merryweather and Barrington went better than Maple, but so did every other project prior to that. And I, you know, if you, we like sports analogies here that, you know, was the New England Patriots season successful? Well, at the outset, you're trying to win a Super Bowl and you can pick successes from that, but so, the ultimate goal to win the Super Bowl, no, that wasn't successful. If you want to say they developed, you know, some receivers and they did this or that, that's, that's fine. So, there still has to be a way today that a project is managed and determined successful or not. Because I don't think a program is going to help us determine whether the pro, the project was more successful or the number of projects are more successful. It's either, and if we're going to use Maple Road as the measuring stick to compare everything else with, because that was one project since I've been on the board that has really fallen apart compared to everything else that it had prior to that. I, you know, I don't know, I guess what I'm asking is, what's in place today to measure whether or not that project met deadline, for example? There's got to be some barometers in there.
I guess, I guess my concern, and the reason I ask the question, is we need to have, eliminate the subjectivity so that five people on the Select Board and the town manager don't come up with five separate perceptions of whether something met our, our goals or not. But if we say, for example, that Barrington Road water and sewer system is going to be installed, you know, within three weeks of startup without any upsets and no, and it's completed within three weeks, then we can all say it met that goal as opposed to it took six weeks. Now, six weeks, somebody say, "Well, you know, there were, there was this, there was that." But, you know, if you set the goal in advance, you can all agree on, on whether you've met the goal. And that's my only point, Stephen, is I'm, I'm trying to avoid the subjectivity that comes up with evaluating progress in what is, I agree, our five main areas of concern. And, and the only way to eliminate subjectivity is to work like crazy to put, put concrete milestones, whether they're numbers or achievements to each one. And I think you'll find that, and I'll be glad to work with you on it, when you do it, we can come up with those concrete milestones that eliminate the, "Well, I thought it was good, well, I didn't think it was good" kind of responses.
Well, like I said, I agree that that's something that we should, we should try and do. I don't possess the individual ability to do that and I'm hoping that these programs we're engaged in. And if, and it turns out that the two things we're getting going now don't do the trick, then we'll figure something else out.
All right. So you'll report back to us and, and Mark, you could mention some things out of the meeting and see where we come up with things.
That drove my life for three- That drove my life for thirty-five years.
And I'm sure Richard, yours too.
One.
One. Did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I've got about seven pages of it.
Yeah, I saw you working away.
We were just presented with a sixteen-page document that we've gone through at record speed, and I think it's going to take a little time to digest and come back with comments, but I did have a couple of things. Asset management system will not define standards. They track accomplishments, they accumulate data. There's no program out there that will design standards other than your people. That is a physical task that must be done because there's no two standards that are identical. So I don't, you made an opposition. If these two programs don't work, well, then we'll try something else. I guess my question is, what guidance did we receive on setting up our asset management system? And who designed the outcome or the outputs of what we should have from the system? Have we reached out to anyone to do that?
Jimmy, how did the decision get made to use Cartograph?
Who defined, no, that's the system. Who defined what our outcomes are? We're, have you grabbed a system off their rack and said, I'm going to make this work? Or have we sat down and designed what we want a system to do and then found a system that meets that need? I think it's, I think I've got my answer. It's rhetorically, I guess I'm asking, because we grabbed a system, and now we're going to force that system into our shell regardless of whether it fits or not. And I'm afraid that that is a recipe for failure unless we're very lucky on grabbing that ideal system. Because usually you design what you want to achieve from a system, and then you find a system to give you that result, including the standards. I mean, we're going to have to develop the standards. I know you may find some boilerplate standards, but I doubt very much if you find what you need specifically for, say, our community. Because even our athletic fields, each field has a different requirement for mowing standards.
I think I, there are best practices out there, and I don't, if I suggested that the software was going to define the standards, I misspoke what I thought I had intended to say was, the software will help us achieve higher standards.
Okay, but we have to start with the standards. And, you know, you were talking about a study determining your FTE. That's how you determine your FTE, is if you have a standard and you say, I'm going to maintain this at that standard. How much FTE does it take to maintain that feature at that standard? And it becomes a mathematical process that rolls up and gives you the magic figure at the end of the line, said this is how much FTE you need at this town to maintain this resource at this standard you set. What I'm saying, if we don't, if we don't get the standards in there and build this thing in the proper fashion, we're going to, we're on a road for failure. We're going to do a lot of starts and stops.
I have a question. How do you get to the standards? Because I know you've spoken about this too much times.
You write them yourselves.
Do you need the consultant to come in and do the right-
You write them yourselves.
So is this similar to what we're doing with Paul and in the policies? The financial policies you're talking about? We need policies or standards to go forward?
I design a standard, take an athletic field. I design a standard, when am I going to mow it, when am I not going to mow it, when am I going to fertilize it? And all these tasks are put in into a computer, like you're saying, in an asset management system. And you put a date when you want the work order to come out, and it automatically triggers and comes out. But you have to determine what the standards are in order to plug in the FTE, your people, to it. And that's when you finally get to the end of the year and you say, these are all the routine tasks that Stephen and Mike have developed in this town. And guess what, select board, I'm four FTE shy from doing the routines that I've identified that must be done. This is the minimum, you know, because I get into this contracting part, the insourcing and outsourcing. There's a lot of these insourcing items, which I think you're very much aware of, that there are normal duties to be done in-house. You would find it rare to go to outsource a lot of these insourcing opportunities. These are what you have maintenance people do. This is the purpose in having a department of public works. But it's not just, it's not just grabbing a couple of maintenance systems or a couple of computer systems and everything's going to be fine, because it's not going to be fine. There's a lot of work and a lot of paradigm shifts that have to take place. There's a lot of things that must take place. And unless we, and you said you read over some of the information. It's not my information. It's been, it's been around for fifty, sixty years, but it's the genesis of how you develop an organization. But these tools that you're talking about are what you need to finish it, but not to start it. This is part to complement it towards the end. Everything he's mentioned here, the asset management and this number system, that's trackers of performance and scheduling. But it still doesn't tell you what you're supposed to do when you get there. And that's what we have to do, is determine what our maintenance plan is. When do we, say right now, when do we, when do we fill potholes? There's a sequence in time when you send your crews out. When do you check drainage? We're checking drainage right now. I know our department is inspecting drainage, because this is the time of the year to inspect drainage. You don't do it in the middle of summer, you do it in the middle of winter. So there's a work order that comes out and it says, check drainage, month of November, December. And that's where your workforce, like a director of public works doesn't even have to be around. You can tell what the people should be doing right now. There's certain tasks that are inherently complementary of a public works organization. But unless it's in this module and spits out the work orders, you just reinvent the wheel all the time. And I understand that's where we're going.
Reinventing the wheel?
No, no. Getting this online, and the task is unbelievable.
Well, you know, you make, you raise good points, Richard. And I think, the one thing I want to say, as we know, we have, when you talk about maintenance standards, like performance standards in terms of how often you fertilize, when do you do it, what do you put down, how often do you mow? I mean, those are all in place because we mow and fertilize and plow and salt. And, I mean, we do all these operational functions now, and I think by and large, those functions work well. There are some glaring holes and things that we don't cover. And I think a lot of that is going around and seeing the leaning sign, or, I mean, the, you know, to be honest with you, the pressure-treated lumber that had rotted away and exposed to rebar or by the football field. I mean, that was, that's embarrassing. And I think, I think all of us felt it, but it just, just wasn't seen. And it's, that's the big thing. To me, that's the biggest issue that creates a very negative perception of the department. You know, we've received feedback from coaches and the athletic director that the turf that the kids play on is the best it's been in years. You know, I don't, because I'm new, I'm not, you know, I don't know if I can judge that. But, you know, we do receive that feedback from the people who are experienced on it. And so those, and that's a result of, you know, sticking to a maintenance standard that works for those particular fields. So like I said, I don't want to convey that they don't have the performance standards for the individual tasks they do. But we do, there is an issue with follow-up on certain tasks or the repetitive nature of some of them not getting done. And you, like I said, your presentation, I think you did a phenomenal job highlighting that. And that's one of the things we're hoping that the software will help, where it's, you know, it's automatic, and then it's, and the stuff that isn't automatic, it's easy to add, to put it in the list of things that needs to be done. And someone who happens to walk around the track in the morning and sees that and take a picture of it with their phone and send it in. And so anyone with a, with an iPhone is now one of our DPW inspectors. And that, I think, is, will be a great benefit to us, or, excuse me, to the residents, but also to the department. But I, you know, and truth be told, like I said, I think, do we have the right number of FTEs doing the right thing based on our standards? That was one of the things that we hoped to achieve from the study. We just have to kind of go back to drawing board and see how can we assess that?
You can, you can actually do that as an internal study if you choose to. But it's going to have to be predicated upon a work plan that Mike has developed that he presents to you and says, Mr. Town Manager, this is my routine work program for the entire next year. And here are all the tasks that I'm going to perform, and here's the FTE required, and detailed analysis. And then that's when you start making decisions. I mean, you're going to defer something, what are you going to defer? You defer, you go into the plan, you defer, and it automatically tells you where your savings are, where you're going to defer.
And that is a big one of our next steps.
It's a big step. I just don't want you to overlook that step, because just jumping to systems doesn't do it.
And I sort of like what he says about sitting and look, sort of reviewing the policies. Have we been sort of taking shortcuts, because that's all we had in the way of resources? And instead, what would, what is the best practices? Are we, why are we not doing the best practices? And then the select board might be able to have a better understanding of where we're missing in our resources too. But I sort of don't want the junk to go in. Let's see if we can try to review and see where the best practices are. Sort of what we're doing with the high school maintenance now. I know the building, all of that, I understand the projects are being put in and the routine scheduling inspections, and we're hoping to be top-notch on that. And hopefully we'll start looking at the rest of the systems too. Any other questions?
Stephen, you mentioned the rotten lumbers and that, you know, and about the computer program where someone could take a picture of it and send it in. You know, the failure of that had to do with our, with our folks, our DPW folks. Because they're responsible for the maintenance of the bleachers. So it's, in some inspection point, I'm assuming we inspect the bleachers once a year, make sure they're safe and all that stuff. Because I'm sure that's why there was that other hole in the bleachers. They were probably working on something, it looked like, with lumber. But that was right by the bleachers that had to be inspected. It was right by the lawn that had to be mowed. And it was right by the same bleachers that had to be cleaned up after games. And so that, no, no program in the world is going to help that. Because one of the things that you have under next step is develop performance standards. And my question would be, is with the DPW director who's been here for ten years, is I like to see what those performance standards are today, because I think that's what's lacking. And, you know, there's other comments in here about, you know, a study to do this, and, you know, we need the study for the vehicle maintenance to make sure we're complying with what we got back. And I don't understand why we need a study or a consultant to find out whether we're complying with it, because that was put on a piece of paper, and I would imagine that the DPW director says, this is what it says I should buy, this is what I should buy, as opposed, and that's how it becomes compliant. I don't, and I understand that if you have an older truck that doesn't fit it, they got to get rid of it. So not all the trucks are compliant with the, with the report, but they're going to be processed out over time, but-
Can I clarify at that point? I don't mean to throw it, I just want, because you're right. Compliance with, we are responsible for the compliance with the vehicle study. Concerns were raised about when the vehicle, the fleet allocation reports, is this what you should buy? Is that actually what we should be buying? And we wanted to just get another set of eyes on those conclusions, that's all. But you're right, we own compliance with the report as existed.
But that report was specifically at the request of the DPW director and town manager, because it was, what do we need? That's what we were told. We need to fund that study because we need to know what we need.
Right.
So how can that be any different, once it's, here's your report about what you need after the assessment was already done about DPW? And literally, the first two trucks we bought were not in compliance with what, because the DPW director knew they weren't in compliance. He brought it before the board. And said, if I get a heavier truck, it'll give me more, not towing capacity, but load capacity of a dump truck. You can have a heavier chassis and so forth. So I don't think another set of eyes is going to do it if the eyes we have right now watching it aren't doing it. I just, I really have, you know, the questions I have is, you know, I understand the facility needs and the top five area concerns. I guess the questions I would have, besides fixing the truck in the snow, because we do have, we do have storms and the bigger trucks, I understand, can't be in the garage. But besides that, I guess my other question would be is, what has the facility impeded? And I don't need you to answer that, because I don't expect you to have that answer today. Is that, what has the facility impeded the DPW from doing? So not the maintenance of the trucks, we know that. If they could get them in a garage and wash them and so forth. And I'm not talking about, you know, if a truck breaks down during a storm, or any time during the wintertime, I know the mechanic is working underneath the truck wherever it is. It's not in-house in the garage. But what other things have been impeded by the facility being in the condition it is is something that I'd like to know.
I can give you a little bit of feedback on that. I know in 2011, the backup generator is really insufficient. And it's, the way it's set up is not, you know, is really, it's beyond its prime and it really isn't set up very well. So during 2011, I wasn't here, but, you know, the administration building, where engineering is, there was no power to the building. Because the backup generator, you know, does the fuel pumps and some of the core services. I think those guys, the people in the departments, the men and women in the department, make it work where they are. I think it's become clear, at least to me, that an investment needs to be made in the very near future before it does impede something they're trying to do, or someone is hurt because of the condition of the building. And that's, and how do you quantify that? I don't know.
And then the other thing I had is, I'm just, this is a quote you made, which was, no one in-house who has knowledge of industry best practices. And I'm disturbed by that, because I would hope that in-house, that our DPW director, who's been there for almost ten years, I think it is, would have some knowledge of the industry best practices and employing them today. But that's your quote, not mine, when we talked about resource allocation, about why we need to hire a consultant, is that no one in-house has knowledge of industry best practices. And I don't know what that's in reference to, if it's just in general. But I can't imagine that we have an employee that's been, the director's been there for ten years that doesn't have, that best practices at his fingertips.
I think, all, like I said to Richard, and I don't, you know, I don't want to sound defensive about the department. I'm trying to be straightforward and candid about my impressions of the department. Like I said, they're far from perfect, as am I. But I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of communication that goes on between departments and other communities. The director has worked for other communities, so he has an extensive institutional knowledge of what other places have done. It's more looking at thirty different communities instead of half a dozen that he has direct experience with or has talked to. And it's not only the areas he knows, but it's thirty different communities for parks maintenance, water and sewer maintenance, you know, sidewalk replay. I mean, there's a whole, you know, the range of things that they do is vast. And to be able to have a broader cross-section of best practices to look at, it can be done in-house, but that's at the expense of other work. That was the only point, and I misspoke there, so I appreciate you giving me a chance to clarify.
Okay, I still don't, I don't think I can agree with that, because I can't, I can't see for us to have an employee as a director in the position for ten years that isn't, listen, this isn't a nine-to-five job. And if it's treated that way, then maybe that's the problem. Because in life, you have to, I have to go get, I have to go get certifications every year, recertifications. I have to find out on my own, and I'm not a town employee, but I have to find out on my own how to do, how to increase my own best practices. So if we have a director that is limited to the scope of his six or seven past employers as what to look at, that's a concern, because to me, that director should be going out there on his own time, if he has to, and find out what other communities are doing in the best practices. I, I think that's a problem. And I, quite frankly, I don't think the board asked you for your impressions of DPW. I asked you, I think we asked you for a review. And I, and I don't think anybody here has said anything about perfection from any one town department. And I, I think that's almost a defensive mechanism to say that they're not perfect. I think everybody understands that. I don't think, there is nobody perfect. And I'm not, we're not pointing the finger and saying, they're not perfect. But when, but when you, when you can't, when we can't identify what the best practices are, when we can't identify, when we say the next step is to develop performance standards, I'm hoping that they're there already. And I don't, I don't know that, because that's not what came back to us. What it says here is, under next step is to develop performance standards. And I would hope, and it says maintenance management system, I would hope that the computer system isn't the performance standard. The performance standard is nothing less than, you know, clean streets, nothing less than whatever. And just as we're doing with policies, you know, that shouldn't have been an awakening that we don't have them. And I, unless I'm reading this wrong, that the next step is to develop its performance standards, my question is, where are our performance standards? What are they, I guess? You know, is it every time you see a piece of trash, someone should stop and pick it up? Is that it? Or is it, you know, routinely, once a day, as you drive around to do this? And, you know, I, I don't want to give anecdotal observations about what I've seen in town. But I, you know, and I, especially on TV, but we can sit down and talk about that, about, you know, looking at what these performance standards are and how we measure them. You know, I find it, in your, in one of the reports you forwarded from the police department, they had how many miles they logged this month. Do we, we don't have the same data, you know, in this analysis of what DPW does per month. And that's just on the police vehicles that they gave us. And the other question I have is, you know, when we're talking about GPS, there was a discussion last year, and I know you're aware of it, that if they couldn't be used for the disciplinary reasons, then they weren't going to be installed, and obviously they weren't. But the GPS, that's not going to be just for DPW, it's going to be for all-town vehicles, I would imagine. Because if it's going to make any department greater efficiency, I would imagine that it would bring greater efficiency to every department, not just one. Or are we looking just at DPW?
Right now, the DPW units have been budgeted. As far as I know, that, that was done, I think, in previous year's budgets. So in terms of applying it to other town vehicles, I think that that is a good idea. And we'll look at our experience we're going to get from the, it's, I mean, it's most commonly, there aren't, there really aren't very many more town vehicles besides, I mean, the DPW is the vast majority of our fleet. So- So I think we're going to look at what we get out of DPW and see, on a case-by-case basis, but you're right, the principle holds for all vehicles. But right now, what we have the budget for the DPW ones.
So what I'm understanding, talking about Richard's, is that if we had hired a consultant, this whole idea of standards and performances would bring us down to how many FTE employees we would need. And we would assess where the department's consolidation has been working or not been working. So we're, you're now going to have to redevelop these standards to start putting them in, and then we will slowly start to hear, as we put them through the system and the process, where we need, we have too many employees, I guess you allocate from water, sewer, field to where we might not have enough. So it's going to take a while, but I guess it comes back to what Richard's talking about, we've got to get those standards of best practices in there to realize who's missing.
Yeah, there's two things, and they're, they're very easy to confuse. A consultant is going to come in and use best man, best maintenance practices to assign FTE. They're going to say, you've got 50,000 square foot of structure, you need 4.2 carpenters, or people that work on them. That's all, they're, they're going to do a very generic overview. And it's, it's a good one, it's, it's a kind of over the surface. To really boil down is when you have to get into this operation, and say, well, this is not, this is not typical, this is atypical. We're going to put a lot more energy into our athletic field, so we need six FTE, or a consultant may say, you only need two based on the size of field. That's where the standards come from. So there's two different things.
Okay, I didn't understand that, okay.
There are two different operations. I did add just two real quick things. We did, as a board, so I think we need to clear this issue up, we did, as a board, vote that we would not install GPS devices in any vehicles until there was, they could be used for corrective action on personnel. And that was a vote, that was a vote we made. And the, just as a thing, I think the generator was actually installed at maintenance, unless I'm mistaken, after 2011.
I think it was repaired.
Was it repaired? I thought it was, a brand-new one was put in.
I think they have a portable one, but they're, the one that's.
No, the one that's down there was installed since 2011.
The one I saw was, and there may have been a new generator. But I, I know they, I think they have a portable one, but I think that's for the pump stations.
No, the one that's down there, Paul?
I'm going to have to say one down there is an older one.
The one that's installed on the pads is an older one?
Yes. The one on the pad is very old.
Okay, I thought it was put in since 2011, so I stand corrected then.
Mike, Mike made a comment when we had that tour, that there was a generator that was put in after the October storm. Where it is, I don't know, but that was a comment he made when he gave us the overview when we were sitting in that.
And he said, no, it was too small.
Yeah, it only dealt with a fraction of the.
Right. It was put in after the storm, but it was, it was undersized.
It was repaired, I think, afterwards. It was not a working one at all. But you might want to check on that, since we're.
That looked pretty new.
Yeah.
If it's a small one, certainly wouldn't fly in the radar, from an expenditure standpoint.
Yeah, well, it may have been all in that storm money, too.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, as far as the storm, I'm sure, and we just have to track back and find.
Yeah.
Either that, or we would have had some kind of authorization.
In regards to the GPS, I thought the vote was that we refused to budget for it. He wanted $30,000, and the end of the conversation was that you should be able to find the money within your own budget.
No, we, we went back and said that we would not authorize GPS to be put in any vehicle unless we could, unless we could go ahead and use it for personnel actions.
That was a vote of the board.
We might want to check that, that's not what I understood the vote to be.
Because Mike had the money, he had, he had the money, because it wasn't, it wasn't just the cost of GPS. I think it was close to $20,000 for an annual contract to keep them operational. And we debated that, because that was a two-minute pulse time. And we had a discussion, said, well, in two minutes, you can't tell me if a vehicle was on Captain Road, because they could run Captain Road and be off it in two minutes. And if we go down to a 30-second pulse time, there's quite a bit more money that's going to have to be put in an annual basis. So there's a, a pretty good operational, annual operational cost being added to our underlying budget at, at this town with that purchase. It's not just the purchase of the product, there's, there's a from now till forever cost associated with that product.
Some of this, obviously, predates my arrival, but I do know that, my understanding of the historical record is, was not that there was a specific prohibition on doing it. I do know this was essentially an issue that had come up during collective bargaining, because if you were going to do discipline, it would have to be bargained, impact bargained. And it did not, it is not a part of the most recent collective bargaining agreement that has been ratified, that takes us through FY16. Installing the GPS, GPS units, to me, is just sound management. And as the manager of the organization, it is my judgment that it will be a valuable tool to help improve efficiency, and also ensure that people are using their vehicles the way they're supposed to be using. I don't see how we can have people concerned about where vehicles are, and are they where they're supposed to be, and be opposed to GPS units.
And what are you going to do about it, if you find out a vehicle's not where it should be?
Well, at least we'll know about it.
No, but what are you going to do about it? Let's get, you want the discussion, you open the discussion, what are you going to do about it? You can't do any adverse action, so what is the benefit in knowing that a vehicle, in this case, is being misused?
What's the alternative?
The alternative is to have it so that we can use them for discipline.
But that's not, that's not an alternative in the, in the current collective bargaining agreement.
Well, then we need to correct it. That's why we said we wouldn't have the GPS units, because we could not see the value to this community if it couldn't be used for some type of form of corrective action. We don't have a 700-vehicle fleet that's under contract, running over a 700-mile city to where it's important, and we know where the vehicles are. We, we should be able to tell where our vehicles are just about any time that they're all doing what they should be doing. And we had a pretty lengthy discussion, if you want to go back, and I'm not sure that half of it didn't take place in executive session. It seemed like there was something happening in executive session.
No, I remember it in open session.
Well, it may have been in both, but I know for, I know for a fact that we voted that they couldn't purchase the things.
Well, my understanding is StatNet says they're very valuable, to get the information out, and not just deciding if someone is not where they're supposed to be, but to better manage to the best efficiency where the plows were going to go, where things are going, and actually to improve the operations. That's what StatNet was saying.
That's used for contract management, Marie, not for a small house like this. How many plows have you got on the road at any one time? The big ones, you got 10 big plows, okay? We got set routes in our community. A foreman can be out of the shop in doubt to any district in this town within 15 minutes to see if a truck is making runs. It's not like having a 700-square-mile city to where you have to sit behind a module. So don't blow the, don't blow the, the benefits of this beyond what the scope is really at.
Are you saying we should remove the, we could stop the, the purchase of the GPS?
I'm strictly saying that we, as a board, voted against these things, and we had a very specific reason. And if we clear that issue up, you can do anything that you so pluse. I've said from the time being, if you can't use it for any type of disciplinary action, this community is not large enough to seem to support GPS-type technology for tracking vehicles. Because what is the benefit? Somebody's going to have to tell me what the benefit is, they're going to have to show me evidence that this is doing something. And I don't think you can. If these were contractors out there, then you can, because the GPS tracks that that plow is down, and that plow is moving at all times, and you're paying for hour of that vehicle truck. We're not going to do that.
It, it, I mean, you know how these systems work, Richard. They, they collect a lot of data, how fast is the vehicle driving, how are they braking, so driving performance, speed. There's a lot more data than just a dot on a map. And I can certainly have the vendor, the vendors that we've talked to come in and make a presentation, we're going to MMA in a couple of days, I'm sure there's GPS vendors there, you, you know, go and see what the, the benefits are. There are energy efficiency benefits that we've learned about that are, it's included, in fact, in our energy reduction plan. So there's more to it than just a dot on a map. And simply having personnel know that we know where they are is a deterrent for not complying with policies or doing things they shouldn't be doing. So the discipline is a, is a secondary thing, and one of the things that we've learned is that it, the discipline isn't needed simply by virtue of having the devices, because people now know that they can be tracked. And I think it's track, you know, you have to start someplace. And so tracking the data and the vehicle use now, I think is essential to, if we decide that we have a rampant problem with vehicle misuse, which I, I do not believe we do, and quite frankly, I think the GPS units will demonstrate that, we are in a position to bargain that subject the next time around. But if we don't know just based on data, it's a lot harder to, we'll end up where we were today without it in the collective bargaining agreement.
Do you have a, do we have a policy for misuse of town vehicles?
Sure.
What, what does it read?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know we have one.
Could you send me a copy of that, please?
Sure.
Okay. And we, you definitely know we do have a policy.
We have a vehicle, we have a.
For misuse of a.
Well, we have a vehicle use policy.
No, I'm talking about misuse of a vehicle. Paul, do you know if we have one?
Not to allow it or not to budget it?
I have a vehicle use policy, that's provision for misuse, I think there's provision in there.
So if that was, what you just said, why wouldn't you install them in all the? Vehicles, Stephen. Why wouldn't it be in police cars, cars the department heads take home, fire trucks, whatever, just to make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing? I don't, I don't understand why we would limit to just DPW.
Well, as I said already, it's budgeted for DPW. We don't have in the budget there as we.
It says two to three.
It lost. And you know it was lost? It was, it was, that vote was not to install them.
I apologize, there we were. I'm, I'm going through executive session minutes of April 16th.
But was it voted?
2013.
Oh, I was there then.
What?
No, no, this was predating. Was it, did the vote win or lose? Did it pass? It was voted on, but it didn't say what the results were. So we'll have to go to the film and see what the results are.
It was an executive session.
It was an executive session, and, and the issue, and the issue.
We also had discussion on that during a budget session.
Budget sessions, what I remembered.
Because we were in negotiations with DPW at the time.
We were in negotiations.
Right.
Again, I remember the conversation, Richard bringing up the pulse factor about two minutes and 30 seconds. That was during a budget session at some point, probably before Stephen arrived, couldn't tell you exactly the way, but I remember being there.
It was February or March, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it was February or March. I couldn't tell you what the vote was, or, or anything like that, but I know there was that discussion.
Okay, so we will have to, we will have to follow up on that, and report to the board the next meeting, where we are in that.
And there's another, there's another side note, too, Marie, and this is a, this is a general question. And, and Stephen, you're part of this discussion, too. If, if a division chief, or a town manager, or anybody decides to add to our budget, above and beyond where it is today, a fixed cost, is that a board-approved issue?
No.
Okay, how, how, how can they further obligate the town without board approval?
Well, they would, I would think they would have to cut somewhere else.
Not saying, where are you cutting?
It was already, it was, it's previously budgeted in previous years.
Now, well, I mean, I don't understand, you got money, budgeted money for that, but you didn't have enough money to fix the tennis courts. This was the same discussion we had two years ago. If they had the money for GPS, why did they come to us for money for the tennis courts? They didn't have money for tennis courts, but they had the money stacked in the budget for this and the maintenance contract. Do we happen to know how much this contract is? For the contract on these units?
I, we're still looking at the vendors.
Okay, but there's, I think it's in the range of $20,000. Paul, do you remember what the figure was?
It was up there, I would say 20,000 or plus.
Okay, so there's the initial acquisition cost, then there's, then this is what I'm talking about. Now there's an additional source that's being put against this community of an, of a fixed expenditure, as long as the system's operational. And I wonder if this is something that, that shouldn't, at all times, when you run a new fixed cost, that you get approval for it? Because it's not, this is not operating within your, this is increasing your budget theoretically. Because you came to us and wanted $14,000 more for the tennis courts, you increased your budget, because you didn't have the money, but yet you had the money to put a GPS system in. I don't, and the GPS system was told that they couldn't put it in the year before. I think there, there at least draws a question for consideration, if nothing else, on this issue.
And I think it's worth looking at. The issue is, right now, we have a town manager that's got, that started mid-budget year. So, but I think the idea of when we have a fixed cost that's coming in, we really need to look and see where it's going to go in the future. And I think that's sort of like the discussion that's been, whether it's the police dog, or the quint truck, or the GPS, it's always, where are these increased fixed costs going to come from in the future? So we will look at the GPS, the value, the cost, the, where, maybe we'll look back at those votes and discussion, and after the MMA, we should have more information, what's going on with the GPS. So I will put that on a future agenda to review.
Can I have one more question? Stephen, one of the things you mentioned in the working groups you have with the DPW folks, that, something about the afternoon breaks, that you're trying to eliminate the afternoon breaks, is that contractual, or is that just a gimme kind of thing?
No, it's contractual.
So you're reopening negotiations, I guess, at that point?
Well, we're just, yeah, I guess, since it made a proposal for them to think about.
Okay, so if you're going to reopen negotiations for that, then obviously you can also reopen for the GPS systems, I would imagine.
Sure, you can reopen, they don't have to.
They don't have to, correct.
What is, what is the reason for getting rid of it? You said, why is it disruptive? I mean, I used to work in the field and had a 15-minute break, and I never considered my activity disruptive to what I was doing. I had my cup of coffee, my little sandwich, and went back to work. What's disruptive? I don't understand.
Not lunch break.
No, I'm talking about the break in the afternoon. If I've been in the ditch all day, all day, I usually had a little bite of the sandwich and went 15 minutes later and went back in the ditch working. I don't understand what is, what is so disruptive about the break in the middle of the afternoon? You said it was disruptive to the workflow.
Based on the, on the feedback, it would, work would flow better without it.
Can you, can you elaborate why?
I really don't want to get into it, because we're, we're going to be possibly bargaining on it, Richard.
Well, then maybe you could.
It's based on, it is based on direct feedback from the division heads.
Maybe you can give me that answer in private, then, because I'd like to know why a 15-minute break would be disruptive to the work activity and would need to be changed or eliminated.
Like I said, the feedback I received from the division heads is that the, it would flow more smoothly without the break. And I think this makes me somewhat unique, but when the people who know the most about it, that I trust, tell me that this is something that would be good, I go with it. I don't, I don't feel the need to prove that I'm smarter than them.
If they were that unique and all, I would think they may be here to answer the question, then.
Is it, is there?
I'm here to answer the question, because it is my, it is my pro, well.
You didn't answer it.
I did answer it.
No, you did not.
We're, we're.
Sir, you did not answer the question.
We have made, we're, I, I don't want to one-sided bargain on, at a public meeting, without having had the chance to, to really discuss it with the union.
You made a statement that said it was disruptive, and I asked why. You made a statement that said it was disruptive and I asked why. I didn't make the statement, you did, sir.
Based on the feedback from the division heads, it would be better without it, without an afternoon break. That's the answer.
And it asks, and it begs me to ask why.
Okay.
Okay.
Marie, if I could just-
Mark.
Stephen, can you just make a note, it's March 13th, 2013, regular session minutes of the select board.
Oh, thank you. Your notes are amazing.
That was executive or regular?
No, regular.
Which, which meeting was it, Mark?
March 13th, 2013.
Okay.
And can I ask, the other, since we talked about that, we don't want to get into, um, executive session stuff and, and since, you know, negotiation is a negotiation, I would imagine that, um, we should be briefed at some point in time if there is going to be something like that, that we can, because I have, I know there's a morning break as well, and I don't know, I really like to, um, find out what, what the issues are, if we're going to open a negotiation with, with a union, potentially.
And the only other comment I wanted to make was, I really like the idea of this meetings that you're having on safety because that's so important. And when we're looking at the, uh, facility upgrades and what we're doing with that, I personally think safety is key. I'm really excited about having the idea of, uh, the town residents being able to photograph, send in complaints or concerns because I think that will really increase flow with, um, communication and that's where we're going to see the biggest changes in regards to safety as well as standards in town. Uh, because I couldn't help thinking if we had that in place, that bar that was missing near the bleachers wouldn't have stayed as long as it did. So I think it's really going to be important. So thank you very much for getting that in place.
Like I said, that was fixed before 7:30 the next morning and I think that's, the DPW has shown, you know, when Richard gave his presentation, a fair number of slides had already been fixed.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that that's something that they've proven to be adept at. It's, but that gives off the appearance of being reactive, not proactive. And I, I think that's a problem that we do have to address.
And I've noticed there've been changes in town in the way of things are being cleaned up and the parks and things like that. And I think it's a matter of communication, people saying, look at this, look at that, and we're starting to see some changes.
You want to start taking pictures of those?
Uh, well, I should be taking, instead, I just sort of describe, yeah. Your pictures are so much better than mine now. Mark?
I've been somewhat doing two things at once here, I was trying to find some reference of who we're talking about, but I've been listening with, as I say, listening with one ear, but, but one of the things that concerns me here is, is defining the proper role of the select board in all, in all of this. And I think it, it, it still ought to be policy and, and not operations, and I don't know where that, where that split is, but Marie, I'd ask you as the chair to make sure we focus on, on policy and not operations. I think clearly since I suggested, I think things like, like, you know, asking the town manager for goals and, and milestones and then performance against those milestones, talks about policy a, a little bit helps to set what we want for policy. Uh, I'm personally a little bit less concerned about, you know, each expenditure of each line item of the, of, of department heads and the instances where we did, and apparently we did, uh, elect not to spend money directly. And, and I think you got to look at the wording because it may have been a prohibition in that budget only and not a general forever prohibition, but we, you know, it, it is different, but for the most part, you know, we don't tell our town department heads how many paper clips they can buy out of their line items or in fact what they should do. And I, I'd just like to make sure that we stick to what we, we do best and let the operations managers do what they do best. I also want to commend Stephen for trying to focus on, uh, on, on the department and not on individuals. This, you know, I think there's a, a tendency to potentially turn this into something that it wasn't and I'm glad that we didn't do that, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Richard?
Yeah, I had one question about Mark's comment. Is it your intent then that you are not concerned if, if a budget is being increased without your knowledge?
Budgets can't be increased without, not our knowledge, they can't be increased without the town's knowledge.
Okay, well, how about, how about the fixed costs against the community? Are you concerned that there's a fixed cost going against the community and you're not aware of it?
Obviously, I'm concerned about any, any cost. The problem is, in, in our town budget, sometime around 10 or 12 years ago, we switched from line item budgeting on the town level to department level and now organizational level. So we do several departments at a time. In essence, we give the town manager the authority to spend a certain amount of money, for example, on the adult center and Parks and Rec, which are lumped together. You know, we used to, and I remember the days going through, you know, approving line items eight through 12, line items 13 through, and we're, you know, and, and those are the days I still remember, Paul, we had to do out-of-town travel separately or out-of-state travel as a, as a separate line item. So, you know, we used to get down to the disgusting details and we don't do that anymore for good reason. So I think the, you know, if, if you hire good people, you got to trust them to, to spend their money, the money appropriately, and if you don't trust them to spend the money, get rid of them and get people you do trust.
But I'm not pointing, I'm not asking you about a point of trust, I'm asking you very specific about, about-
If I'd authorize $8 million-
Well, let me finish, Mark.
Okay.
Okay, you've, I've heard what you had to say and you, you've put it into trust factors and all that, which I don't think is applicable because that indicates that if I have opinion that I don't trust somebody. Okay? That's, that's the feedback I get from that. But my, my, my point was very, very, very specific. If, if an operation is going to be taken on and there's going to be an increased fixed burden, a financial burden placed against our community, do you think as a select board member with executive management and approval of the budget, do you want to be made aware of it or do you not want to be made aware of it?
Not only do I want to be made aware of it, but I want to know how they're going to take on that additional fixed burden without a permanent increase to their budget.
Okay, fine, that's all I wanted to hear. I, I thought that's what you said, but your words before did not allude to that.
I'm sorry if I-
Okay.